Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then, decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So, pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then, all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the Consent Agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on Item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event, where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegacounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the register button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the in-person option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit register, and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So, you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations, because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So, let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I will now call the October 22, 2025, San Diego County Board of Supervisors Land Use Legislative Session to order. Ryan, please call the roll for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery-Step. Before I call the roll, I'd like to note that Chair Protem Agiri is participating via teleconference. As such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. With that, now I will call the roll. Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Chair Protem Agiri.
Here.
Vice Chair Montgomery-Step.
Here.
And Chair Lawson Reamer. All right. So, the first item will be for Chair Protem Agiri to make a statement about participating remotely and state whether anyone over the age of 18 is in the room, as well as their relationship to the supervisor.
Good morning. I'm participating remotely under the Just Cause AB 2449 because I'm still feeling unwell, and I'm unable to attend in person. No one over the age of 18 is in the room with me.
All right. Thank you so much. So, before we begin the business of today's meeting, I want to take a moment to address some House rules. Public engagement is the cornerstone of transparent and accountable government. And these Board of Supervisors meetings are one of the primary venues where all San Diegans can make their voices heard. The county is committed to a work environment free from unlawful discrimination and harassment, including sexual, racial, religious, age, disability, or any other form of discrimination or harassment. Under the Board's rules, speakers are not allowed to use loud, shouting, threatening, impertinent, slanderous, profane, or abusive language to any member of the Board, staff, or the general public. Additionally, all remarks and questions must remain on topic during the duration of your speaking time and must be addressed to the Board and not to county staff. Any speaker who engages in comments that break these rules will be issued a warning. After one warning, you will be asked to leave the chambers for the rest of the meeting. Finally, speakers threatening violence may be reported to law enforcement and removed from the meeting. This is a space for community engagement, deliberation, and progress, not for harassment, violence, and hate. Okay. We will now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not on an item on the meeting agenda. The only action that the Board may take is a referral to the Chief Administrative Officer. Under the Board's rules, speakers can only speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication, either at yesterday's General Legislative Session or today's Land Use Legislative Session, but not both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address the Board at their own convenience. To better facilitate the meeting for non-agenda public comment, we will have five speakers in person, five speakers by phone. The rest of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with Board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion item with 10 or more speakers, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion at the chair's discretion. A reminder that according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments. And a final reminder. According to the Board's Rules of Procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clamp, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given one warning. After that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Ryan, can you please call the speakers?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery-Step. We have 13 total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, three individuals in person, and 10 requesting to speak by phone. For those that have requested to speak by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak. At the podium, you'll then have two minutes to address the Board. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra, Dorothea Flanagan, and Robert Gurman.
My person uses the name Audra. I'm here again to talk about Malaika and Zaya Robinson. They're currently having a 12-month review to see what to do with the girls and eventually then decide what to do permanently. And it's really disturbing that, you know, sexual abuse is being covered up instead of what is in the best interest of the girls to make sure there's no detriment. There's been no investigation. And when Malaika has reported this to people that she trusts, and it's being buried by saying that I was coaching her, and then therefore no investigation is taking place, and then fraud and lies can be entered into the record and county council can work with the Guardian, AdLitem, and social workers to hide it. But why would they not want me to testify? If I was coaching her, wouldn't it be good to bring me on the stand and ask questions as opposed to keeping me out by saying that, you know, I didn't spend enough time with the girls, but in fact, I spent enough time that she felt comfortable enough to report an individual? And there is evidence of UTIs and rashes and things like that. So, it's not as though there's not evidence, but what the caseworkers will do is they'll take testimony that they claim that she has said and use it to try and, you know, keep her family from reconnecting. So, when you guys allow this to take place, it really puts a stain on the county. It really does. And when you guys say that you care, then you should want to investigate that. You should want to make sure. If you're claiming that I'm coaching her, let's prove it. But I have evidence that that's not true.
Honorable Board of Supervisors, I'm Dorothea Flanagan. My education, my second degree, is in educational leadership, aka superintendent of a school district. I was raised to obey the laws of the land that it might go well with me in my life. I'm here because of the Carnival Roach Coaches in the Dirt out on Gopher Canyon Road in District 5. What we've got going on is a lot of violations of the sidewalk vendor laws. I've gone to five different entities to try to get the right answers, and nothing's changed. First of all, they have to be 500 feet away from the exit of I-15. I'm not making this stuff up. It can be read. And then they have to be 200 feet apart. Okay? What we have is shoulder to shoulder in the dirt, and the customers are parking on the road in the bike lane. That's illegal. Now, they zip tie or they wire whatever they're advertising to traffic signs, like 45 miles an hour and such. That's illegal. They make U-turns there. It's a steep hill. It's at least a 14% grade. They come very fast. Thank you.
And can I just dabble real quick?
Go ahead, sir.
This has been going on for a while, and a couple of months ago, somebody sent me pictures of these pop-up restaurants right at the Gopher Canyon and I-15. I had asked code compliance to go out and take a look. Looks like we need to do that again and keep it up.
Thank you.
Will do, Supervisor.
Robert Gurman, I have a proclamation. Whereas October 19 through 25 of 2025 is National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week, whereas October is Children's Health Month, a time to raise awareness about children's environmental health, including the dangers and potential health impacts of lead. Whereas San Diego County has now exceeded LA County in lead emissions from GA planes and has taken over as the number-two worst out of over 3,100 counties in the U.S. I have more, but I was just notified by Deputy CAO Lynch and the Board of Supervisors have now ordered the posting of Prop 65 signs regarding lead emissions at all of the county's airports. And I just want to say thanks. I mean, on the record, thanks. So, I will tear up the rest of my proclamations, and believe it or not, I'm at a loss for words. Thank you very much. It's a big win for us. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, in accordance with the Board rules, we'll be hearing from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning. This is Ann Riddle. And it seems a shame, since there's so few of us in the queue, that we couldn't all speak and just be done with it. Most of us call in from our work, which is my case. I'm calling in because I didn't hear it celebrated, although just mentioned a little bit ago, that Red Ribbon Week is next week. It's observed nationally from October 23 to October 31. This Board of Supervisors has supported policy in the past that demonstrate to our county's youth that a smoke-free, bait-free choice will assist in their long-term success. Red Ribbon Week is the largest, longest-running drug prevention campaign in the United States. The theme this year is "Life is a Puzzle. Solve It Drug-Free." This theme was selected to inspire young people to stay drug-free so they can positively put together the pieces of their lives. These pieces of the lives I'd also like to address because I'm very concerned about the mental health and substance struggle of our 18 to 30 as they try to find a place for themselves in a complicated world. I really do feel, out here in the unincorporated area, that this advertising of our marijuana storefronts via social media and billboards, egregious billboards, threatens and sabotages and diverts the lives of our young adults, who may decide that an acceptable form of relaxation, diversion, or digression is getting high. Good mental health is precious, and our county should only involve themselves in those business activities that will improve mental health. And that would never include marijuana storefronts, lounges, cultivation, and their accompanying billboards. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Good morning. This is Peggy Walker. Supervisors, you've heard repeated science-based warnings from the medical community about the adverse impacts of expanding marijuana operations on physical and mental health well-being. Now, a new report from the Heritage Foundation adds another dimension, one that should concern us as a military community. The report documents significant involvement by the Chinese government and Chinese Communist Party in the U.S. marijuana trade, describing it as a growing national security threat. According to their findings, China is covertly supporting organized crime networks that operate illicit marijuana grows and related inner crises here. The goal is to undermine American military readiness by increasing marijuana use among our military-age population. The report further highlights a troubling pattern. Wherever marijuana is legalized, the illicit market does not disappear, but expands. Legal and illegal operations go side by side, and China is reportedly involved in both. Local law enforcement further cautions about an influx of mislabeled marijuana products, imported from China and illegal there, but exported here where they bypass import controls and end up on our retail outlets. These unauthorized Chinese products pose real dangers. As one of the largest groups using marijuana, pardon me, and a key target of marijuana marketing, the vulnerability of military-age youth deserves serious consideration as we assess how marijuana policies may be harming young people and ultimately, long-term national security.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Barbara Gordon. I wanted to share with you, I attended the Planning Commission last week, where the county's cannabis ERI program was discussed. It is disappointing the presentation is not addressing the impact of marijuana businesses, which will be significant in the back country. Marijuana growers use pesticides and fertilizers that can contaminate soil and water sources. These chemicals can harm local ecosystems, affecting wildlife and plant diversity. Marijuana cultivation requires significant water resources, often exceeding that of the traditional crops, leading to a strain on local water supplies. The cultivation and processing of marijuana generates significant odor, and it has waste, including plant material, packaging, chemicals. And if it's improperly disposed, it can lead to pollution that harm local environments. Another issue is the mounting reports citing the marijuana market has become saturated and may not be sustainable in long term, leading to potential financial instability for individuals relying on these jobs. I urge this Board to listen to the planning groups and to the community members, who are not asking for, nor do they want more marijuana businesses in the back country. County staff are only listening to the loudest voices, which are coming from the marijuana profiteers, not the residents that live there. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hello. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator with a focus on youth substance use prevention. I'm here to speak against the county's plan to expand the marijuana industry's footprint into the unincorporated areas. Yesterday, I attended an important meeting providing updates on the ongoing nationwide ABCD study, of which University of California, San Diego, is a part, and it tracks nearly 12,000 adolescents over a 10-year period. Midpoint results show that marijuana use takes off in the 16- to 17-year-old range, surpassing the use of nicotine. More boys than girls are using, but young girls account for the fastest-growing group of users, and use by girls can become problematic in a shorter period of time. The study data finds that family history is a factor in youth, but not genetics, as genetics are not as significant as the environment in which the children and teens are raised. Additionally, use by their peers is the most robust indicator. Other studies have shown that youth who are exposed to marijuana advertising are more likely to use the drug. It becomes normalized in their minds, and the perception of harm is reduced. Therefore, we know that when marijuana advertising increases in an area, especially if it does not already exist, it's going to normalize it in the minds of more teens and more young people. And this is definitely a danger to their ability to grow up drug-free and not being influenced by this predatory industry. So, please keep this in mind. Remember that in rural areas, there is no lack of access because deliveries are available 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our fifth and final caller for the morning session.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Madison, and I'm speaking today in strong opposition to permitting marijuana cultivation in San Diego's back country. Just last month, Governor Newsom's office reported that over 21,000 illicit cannabis plants were eradicated statewide, many hidden in sensitive habitats. These grows were not only illegal, but dangerous. Officers seized illegal pesticides, diverted millions of gallons of water, and even found firearms on sight. These are not just isolated criminal acts. These are environmental crimes. According to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, these 21,000 plants would have consumed up to 9.5 million gallons of water. That's water stolen from our ecosystems, from our communities, and from already stressed watersheds. Many of these grows were located deep in the wilderness, just like our back country here in San Diego. Allowing cultivation in remote areas makes it easier for bad actors to hide and much harder for authorities to detect and shut down. In the process, they destroy fragile habitats, poison soil and waterways with toxic banned pesticides and threaten local wildlife and public safety. CDSW Director Charlton Bonham said it best. "When criminals steal or destroy the natural resources that support California's biodiversity, we are committed to stopping them, no matter how far into the wilderness they try to hide." I urge you to follow that same commitment here. Protect our land, our water, and our safety. Do not open the door to marijuana cultivation in the back country. It's a risk we can't afford. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Okay. Thank you very much. We now proceed with the formation of the Consent Agenda. That's Items 1 through 8 today.
Chair, can I? Due to potential conflict and the advice of the county council, I'm going to be recusing myself from the Consent Agenda. Thank you.
The entire Consent Agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. We now proceed with the formation of the Consent Agenda, Items 1 through 8 for today's meeting. All items on the Consent Agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals are able to comment on the Consent Agenda after supervisors pull any items they would like for discussion. So, would any of my colleagues have anything to pull or any comments, beginning with Vice Chair Montgomery-Step?
No need to pull anything. I will move the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Chair Protem Agiri?
No items to pull. I'm happy to second.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Anderson?
I have to pull it this time.
Okay. And I just have a comment on Item 7. I'm extremely excited about this collaboration and finally being able to move forward with this park and this baseball field. It's going to be really great for the kids. So, thank you so much to the team. Okay. So, we will now turn to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have eight total requests to speak on items on the Consent Agenda, three individuals in person, five requesting to speak by phone. Again, for any individuals that are requested to speak on the items on the Consent Agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You'll then have two minutes to address the Board. Please begin by stating your name for the record. Also, when speaking, please identify which items on the Consent Agenda you are speaking about. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals: allegedly Audra, Brian Fox, and Robert Gurman.
My person uses the name Audra. This is really kind of including everything on here because you guys are, you know, with your land use and everything and what you're doing with the environment, you're supposed to be protecting the land, the air, and the water. to be protecting the land, the air, and the water, and not allowing them to be toxified. And so, when you're even having somebody go for number five to travel to Denmark, or wherever it is, that's paid for by the Ministry of Denmark, obviously, people, when they want to influence you, are going to pay for, you know, public officials or people that are in charge of different things to come and, you know, engage in listening to what they're saying is going to be, you know, helping us even get affordable housing and how to deal with climate change. But you should be looking at the Clear Skies Act and things like that, and really, you know, starting to look into whether or not there is weather modification, whether or not there is spraying in our skies. Because if you do care about the environment, it's just very questionable when you don't even want to bring in that and say, you know what, we have brought in data, because Tara, you love your data. But I mean, if you look into it, then you would see that everything that you're pushing, because you say that it's the climate that's doing it, then it would go against you getting your funding and all of these things, and pushing people in the direction that you are. But I mean, if you do care about the water and the air that we breathe, and the land, I mean, it's totally being destroyed because of people, and I'm not talking about through cars and stuff like that. So I really don't understand, as someone who's like an activist, why you wouldn't want to look into that and prove me wrong. Right? You think I'm full of shit, then let's go, and let's have the data be there so that people can, you know, be sure that everything that you're pushing is really to protect us, and it's not, you know, hiding and obfuscating the truth.
Good morning, Chair Lawson Reamer and supervisors. I'm speaking to the Carlsbad Jet Center. My name is Byron Fox, and I represent TDA Investment Group. TDA is a fiduciary, a fiduciary for the Construction Laborers Pension Trust for Southern California. It is a fund that provides retirement benefits for over 30,000 union laborers, laborers, of course, which work, maintain, and build the infrastructure, and which we all depend. One of the strongest assets of the trust is the Carlsbad Jet Center. And since the trust acquired the leasehold in 2019, it has spent $15 million improving the infrastructure, the improvements, enhancing safety, and advancing sustainability. Now, our goal is to be one of the best, if not the best tenant in the county's airport system. And I think our investment to date, it really highlights that commitment. This new lease will help us to build upon that investment. What I'd like to do now is to, a moment of appreciation for the recommendation to approve by not only the county staff, but also the Palomar Airport Advisory Committee. And then a special words of thanks to Marali Pasamati and to Jamie Abbott for their professionalism during this whole process. You know, this is really a fine example of a public-private partnership, which delivers to the pensioners, the airport, and the county. So I respectfully encourage your eye vote, and thanks for the time this morning. Robert Gurman, and I want to continue on from my public comment. Supervisor Chairperson Lawson Reamer, thank you very much for the Prop 65 signs. You initiated it, you carried it out. And I want to thank my local supervisor, Joel Anderson, because I know he was a believer in it too. So thank you. But, number eight, I oppose number eight, and briefly, 50-year lease is too long. If you have a strategic plan that comes out of the airport authority, that's only good for five years, why do they need a 50-year plan? Every five years, they're supposed to upgrade the strategic plan. Why do they need 50? Why don't they just get a lease for five? Maybe a three- or a five-year extension to adjust to the new strategic plan? Or are we locked in for the next 150 years on a plan that is not keeping up with current conditions in aviation and politics? Because they're dying right now. There ain't no tourists coming in. They're like Las Vegas. So I don't understand the 50-year lease. Also, we have a pending lawsuit at Carlsbad that could have a tremendous impact on a 50-year lease, unless we dismiss that. Is that, is that still active? So again, are we really looking at the big picture here, or are we rubber-stamping stuff because the airport administrators are coming in and saying, hey, this is what we need to borrow money? Well, if you need 50 years to borrow money, you're on shaky grounds with the lenders. So a five-year lease would be just fine, that's what they did before. Like I said, maybe a little extension if they come in and tell you what's going on. But 50 years is way too l- I don't care if they're a commercial airport or not. It's the standard now that you have set, and the prior administration gave a 50-year lease to Jet Air. The only reason they gave them a 50-year lease is they were the only people that bid on it. Thank you.
We will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first, with our first caller.
Uh, seven, renaming the- oh, bold. Renaming the park way up in Ranger, Santa Fe for the Padres is dumb, and the men fringe on trademarks. The Palomar Airport stuff, a 50-year lease is way too long. A lot can happen in 50 years. While this lease will create a bit of additional revenue, it could involve you in legal and other problems. Projected rent might not materialize, improvements may not last as long as planned, zoning wildfire, danger, or utility or insurance cost can change dramatically, may make the project financially infeasible, taking us with an unusable building. The lessie could go bankrupt, threatening any extra funds we're getting. The working family ordinance requires lessies to pay prevailing wages on new construction and provide their employees with paid sick leave might actually be more than P R 2006 LLC can handle. And using only 70% of the estimated leasehold amount for the plant improvements and 30% back to the airport, recipe for disaster. Three, the regional water management. Two bad water management is regional, so you can't just drive a few miles to where the water's better. One M O U recital says we need three agencies, the former regional water management group. Another mentions a group with only two agencies. Why not specify an area or number of people? I also see that all parties to a group are to share equally in liability, section 1A, which is-
Thank you, your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker. Consuelo, you are our next speaker, you may be muted. Consuelo, you may be muted. Okay, we'll go to our next speaker.
Oh shit, where's my phone? Where's my phone?
There you are. We can hear you.
Okay, so I'm just going to go and, uh-
You can go ahead and begin your comments, Consuelo.
Let's see, I will leave off, yep, yep, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead. Consuelo, you there?
So let's see, also, yep, okay. So also, all parties to a group are to share equally in the liability, which is unfair if one of the agencies promote improvements, which result in damage based on misinformation, be equally liable. For instance, promoting an unhealthy level of additives like fluorine and chlorine, allowing dumping, or industrial pollution, or excessive crap in the water. And section 5A says that each party shall provide an equal share of funding for the group. This is unfair to less densely populated areas. The M O U needs to be redone. Right? Okay. And amen to everything Robert Gurman said.
All right, thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Hey, Truith. Item one, why wasn't the $36,000 donation from the state-certified agency for D E H Q staff to travel to conferences given in the form of a grant? Interesting how these Cal EPA Environmental Training Protection and Response Plans, if I've never included cleaning up or stopping Mexico sewage. Item three, where is the San Diego Integrated Regional Water Management established by the state, been under response to such a water challenge? Item five, a huge no to any and all out-of-country travel for any supervisor, staffer, or county employees. Joel and Monica already blew 22,000 of our taxpayers on a trip to Socialist Austria, and now Paloma and H H S A are probably going to waste another 30,000 on a trip to Suicidal Japan. No to any staffer like Eden Brookman from the Office of Sustainability and Environmental Justice receiving salary and benefits while on a vacation, going with British Columbia, extremist Canada, to Socialist Denmark to learn about socialist sustainable urban development. Is the county mostly urban? Is complete communities a county policy? If not, then why would county staffers go to Denmark to be propagandized with those failed policies? You could just look at San Diego City. I don't care if Socialist Denmark is stealing their citizens' taxpayers to pay for this trip in full. There's nothing good socialism offers. That's why Denmark has been pushing away from socialist programs for the last few years. So heads up, I will be exposing all of these trips with receipts. Item six, why is Caltrans stalling on these O-Tai Mesa parcels? That's suspicious. Item seven, I do not approve of this park being renamed to Padres Park. The Padres donors should be unselfish and leave the name of Miracle Field to honor the reason why so many donated to restoring the field, the fact that it's accessible to all. Item eight, notes to the Communist Working Party ordinance would jack up rent at Palomar Airport. And which item is Jim's conflict of interest? That should be disclosed publicly. Everyone should know why he can't vote on the entire consent. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Montgomery Stapp, a second by Supervisor Agiri. We'll have to take a roll call vote, so please go ahead.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson?
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond has recused himself. And Chair Protam Agiri?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp?
Yes.
And Chair Lawson Reamer?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on, I did want to just ask a question of our loose team. There was a question regarding why the lease is 50 years, so I was hoping you could just talk a little bit about that, because we had a question from someone who was commenting on consent.
Thank you, Chair. We can certainly speak to the owner as well, but our understanding is that the 50-year lease provides the opportunity to access greater financing opportunities for the tenant, which then allows them to be able to invest in the property more substantially because they have that stronger financing approach. That also provides us some security over that period. We will come back to the board for lease updates and amendments as needed, including when we negotiate new terms at any point.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so we now move on to discussion items. We'll begin with discussion item number nine, Traffic Advisory Committee, beginning with public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have seven total requests to speak, one individual in person, and six requesting to speak by phone. Also, I'd like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment, which was neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speaker. We'll turn it over to allegedly Audra. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you, Ryan. Called you Andrew earlier, sorry about that, I was looking right at you. My person uses his name Audra. It's so funny how we do these things, we're slowing down the traffic, right, and allowing for, you know, some revenue to come in from tickets and things. But, you know, what are you doing that would be, you know, equally as you're often to mitigate the fire risks that you're putting people in by doing the things you're doing with the Traffic Advisory Committee? And, you know, taking away lanes, making things slower, putting in the roundabouts? I mean, you guys, yesterday were concerned about getting the FEMA funding and stuff like that. So it's like, if it has to do with money, you guys work lickety-split, but I feel like when we're talking about making sure that people are not going to be put into danger, that it's like, well, let's just see if something happens. Let's keep going down this path, and then if, if a disaster happens, we'll mitigate it then. We've already seen it happen in L.A., and so I'm just wondering, why would it need to happen here? Why wouldn't you do everything in your power to make sure that the things that you guys are implementing aren't dangerous? I mean, but again, you go ahead and you, you know, put up a Prop 65 sign to say there's lead poisoning and stuff, kind of like, enter at your own risk, we're going to tell you about it, but we're not really going to mitigate it. Because if you did care about the environment, you wouldn't just do stuff like that, and be like, I'm going to, I'm going to put up a sign that it's toxic. Wouldn't you want to stop it? But no, because look at Tijuana River Valley. We've got it, decades ongoing, and then we're going to collect data and see, you know, what it's doing to people and stuff like that. It's just really telling, the way that you guys act when there are toxic things going on, and you, you say one thing, but your actions speak louder than your words, because everything you're engaged in is the complete opposite of what you claim.
Thank you. Now we will hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We'll go ahead and do the comments.
Okay, I'm glad to see six certify the existing speed limit, and two certify the speed limit for the adjacent section of road. It reduces the number of signs you waste our money on. And speak of money, I'm kind of concerned about the number of traffic lights the tech committee installed, because they tend to be kind of expensive items. On item two, be the Alpine Road 50 mile an hour speed limit. This is a somewhat winding road near numerous houses, and in the interest of safety, I would think that a 35 or 40 maybe speed limit would be more advisable and a lot safer. So hopefully, you can take another look and maybe slow things down a bit. I hope that the tech committee will also spend more of its time on big issues like not blocking, uh, uh, and also, like, getting away of evacuation. So, yeah, please, you know, spend more time looking at issues, safety, and maybe get more of the few bike lanes too, that kind of mess. That's about all for today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye.
Hey there, Truith. I appreciate that every single traffic request has the origin of the request clearly listed, and that 95.4% of them come from actual residents, not just on the whim of the anti-car extremists serving, or maybe have pass served on the Traffic Advisor Committee. If the county would stay on this path of accountability and transparency- If the county would stay on this path of accountability and transparency, there could be more nice things to say more often. You guys should consider that. However, my recommendation for Tac is to start advising on solutions like speed cushions instead of dangerous roundabouts, and on evacuation rounds instead of useless bike lanes. I don't know if they actually can advise on evacuation rounds, but I think everyone should be focused on that because if you don't, then in an emergency, you're not going to know where to go. I don't care what police or fire tell you, if the evacuation route doesn't exist, you won't have one to survive on. So I'd like people to consider things like that. And then the other consideration would be, maybe every supervisor should make sure that they're early for meetings because shame on Tara being late and missing the beginning of not agenda today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you want to, my colleagues, have any comments or questions on item nine?
A move approval.
We have a motion for approval, and we have a second. A motion from Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Anderson. Please call the vote.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Anderson.
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond.
Yes.
Aye, thank you. Sorry, we have to do roll call. No problem, we have to do roll call because we have virtual. Chair Protem Agiri.
Yes.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp.
Yes.
And Chair Lawson Reamer.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
Okay. Thank you very much to everybody. We now begin with discussion item 10, Establish the Lincoln Acres Community Sponsor Group. Chair Protem Agiri, this is your item. Would you like to make introductory comments?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. Our office is excited to bring forward this important item, developing Lincoln Acres as a community sponsor group. Our county staff have been generous enough to provide a brief overview of what a community sponsor group is first, and then I'll turn it over to them, and then I'll have additional comments after public comment.
Good morning. Community planning and sponsor groups are local advisory bodies that give residents in the unincorporated areas a structured voice in land use decisions. They don't approve or deny projects, but they review and advise on things like development proposals, zoning changes, and general plan amendments. Some community planning and sponsor groups have dedicated committees to work on local issues such as roads, parks, and libraries. Their input helps county staff, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Supervisors understand how projects and policies align with each community's character and priorities. There are 28 of these advisory groups across the county, all helping to make planning more transparent, responsive, and reflective of local voices. Community planning and sponsor groups are guided by Board Policy I-1, which sets the rules for how each group is created, how members are selected, and how meetings are conducted. They also follow the California's Ralph M. Brown Act, the state's open meeting law, which ensures transparency in local government. This means that meetings are open to the public, agendas are posted at least 72 hours in advance, and anyone can attend, listen, and comment. All discussions and votes must happen in public. These rules help maintain community trust and accountability. Membership depends on whether the group is a community planning group or community sponsor group. In the case of a sponsor group, such as the proposed Lincoln Acres Community Sponsor Group, members are appointed by the Board of Supervisors rather than elected. Residents can volunteer or be nominated to serve, and appointments are made by the Board of Supervisors. To qualify, members must be registered voters in a group's area, and for sponsor groups, property owners may also be eligible. Each member usually serves a four-year term and must continue to live within their own community, within the group's boundary throughout the term.
Community planning and sponsor group members play a vital role in shaping how community planning decisions reflect community needs. They review and comment on proposed discretionary projects and policy updates, provide formal recommendations to county staff, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Supervisors. They create a forum where neighbors can discuss local priorities, strengthen collaboration between the county and the community, and promote transparency and civic engagement. Once seated, members attend regular public meetings, complete county trainings, and follow ethics and financial disclosure rules. They serve as impartial community advisors, not as advocates for private interests. Their work ensures that local knowledge directly informs county decision-making, and that each community's character and vision are represented at the table. Planning and Development Services can support filling Planning and Sponsor Group vacancies by posting ads in the local newspaper, sending email blasts to our stakeholders, and posting information to the department's website. For more information, please visit sandieg county.gov/pds/communitygroups or email pds long range planning at sdcounty.ca.gov for meeting schedules, vacancies, or training information. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Agiri, did you have any additional comments?
No, I just really appreciate the staff for the presentation and explaining to those who may not know what a community sponsor group is. So I'm ready to hear from the public. Thank you, Chair.
Fantastic. Okay. So we now turn to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 17 total requests to speak, 12 individuals in person, and five requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did receive 18 ecomments on this item. 16 were in favor, one was in opposition, and one was neutral. For any individuals that have requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will then have one minute to address the board. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Alicia Morrison, allegedly Audra, and Antoinette Romo.
Alicia Morrison, for the record. The floor mandarin in this county building has a very important motto, "Good government demands the intelligent interest of every citizen." That is why I'm here to support the Agenda Item 10 because it is a need for the community of Lincoln Acres. Lincoln Acres needs the establishment of the Lincoln Acres Community Sponsor Group to preserve, protect the community's character from irresponsible development that would cause harm or be injurious to the public's health and safety for the people of Lincoln Acres, as well as the community character. Case point, Lincoln Acres residents are coming up on a one-year anniversary of a public health nuisance project that was proposed adjoining jurisdiction to National City. Our historic residential neighborhood was facing a 24-hour gas station, car wash, drive-through coffee shop with alcohol sales on .68 acres. I'd like to refer to the Chapter III Land Use Element Goal LU4 and Policy 4.2. Thank you.
Thank you. Antoinette Romo? We have arrows on the floor if you could line up there. Thank you. No, she, yeah, you can come forward in any order, but we just ask that the speakers in the queue, if you could please line up on the arrows on the floor. Thank you.
Okay. So the problem with you guys appointing these people is that you would be able to influence the decision-making potentially in that community, and, you know, power corrupts. So it's interesting when people will come in here having, you know, these boards make decisions, and then they'll be overridden, and people won't even be listened to. So, you know, when you're going to be the ones making the decision on who will be there, it's a little bit terrifying to think about because I don't know that that would protect the community, but it would allow certain things to come in that maybe the people don't want if they were the ones making the decision. I mean, because of things like what happened with David McQuaid or whatever, the Rancho Santa Fe Fire Chief was telling a community of people that it was actually unsafe to put that forward, the project that was going to be put forward if it was to come through at that time, but because it had been brought through in the past, he came here and lied to you guys and said that it was safe. So, you know, I just, we got to be protecting communities, and if you guys can't do that, then someone needs to.
Thank you. Antoinette? And then as Antoinette's coming forward, I'd like to invite forward Ashley Morrison and Dorothea Flanagan.
Hi, my name is Antoinette Romo. I reside in Lincoln Acres. It's simple, right? I support this because democracy, transparency, you know, representation, that is the core of what we stand for. And so we're asking just for a voice, just to participate in the process. Yes, they would be appointed, but we have to rely on the integrity of each person to do what's best for our community. Isn't that what we all do here? We all want to work towards a positive solution for where we live. So please, please, we just want to have a voice. We want to have representation so that we can be an active partner in what happens to our community and not be gobbled up by a city who neighbors us and offers us no voice or representation at all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dorothea Flanigan. I see only have 56 seconds here. Let me tell you about the real world with the community sponsor group. They have an attorney, an attorney on the Boncel Group. When I applied to get on there, and I am really highly qualified, and I worked my butt off for that whole region, he said to me, "Do you think you'll live that long?" Thank you, age discrimination remark. And what do they do? They pick the people that they want who want to push school bond issues or developers to do excessive building that goes against 65% of what the people really want there. It's a good old boys' club. They're not picked by the supervisor. They get together and they pick who they want, who thinks like them. That'd be like if I were Democrat, I'd pick all Democrats. It's wrong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker's coming forward, I'd like to invite forward Doyle Morrison and Kurt Warden.
Good morning. Ashley Morrison, speaking on item 10. November 1992, I was introduced to Lincoln Acres when my parents brought me home from the hospital to the property my great-grandmother Jip sold to them, where we still reside today. While I don't remember that day, I do have early memories of stroller rides up the street into the cemetery for feeding the ducks at the pond, birthday parties, riding my pony around the block, playing with my brother in the park behind the library, and I even remember the post office that sadly no longer exists. Those are the reasons I hope you'll approve the establishment of a Lincoln Acres Community Sponsor Group. I cherish the land that those memories were collected on, and I think a community sponsor group would help Lincoln Acres in preserving its country charm and avoiding further annexations, which is the reason we're only down to approximately 220 acres now, when our boundary historically stretched Benita to the bay. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Doyle Morrison. Good morning, Supervisor staff and all of San Diego County. I lived at 2315 East 32nd Street in Lincoln Acres, starting in 1962. In 1988, I moved to 3249 Orange Street, where I lived for the past 37 years in Lincoln Acres, all of that in Lincoln Acres. I support this resolution and moving forward with Lincoln Acres Community Sponsor Group. This action will solidify the democratic process for the community of Lincoln Acres and give guidance to the county to make positive decisions in and around the community. Please approve this resolution. Thank you for the time.
So next speaker's coming forward, I'll invite forward the next two speakers, Luis Sains and Michelle Krug.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. I'm Kurt Warden, a resident of Lincoln Acres. I'm here today to voice strong support for the resolution establishing Lincoln Acres Community Sponsor Group. Lincoln Acres is a unique community, about 200 acres in size, home to roughly 2,000 residents. It's a proud, historic neighborhood, but unlike other unincorporated areas in San Diego County, it has never had a formal sponsor group to represent its interest in land use and planning decisions. So this resolution changes that by creating a five-member sponsor group, the boards giving Lincoln Acres residents something they've long needed, a formal voice in the planning process, a recognized forum to raise concerns and share ideas, direct connection to decision-makers at the county. This isn't just about process, it's about fairness. Even, every community deserves the opportunity to shape its future, and Lincoln Acres should be no exception. The sponsor group will help ensure that growth and development is planned correctly. Thank you.
Good morning, county supervisors, staff, and community members. My name is Luis Sains. I am a 42-year resident of Lincoln Acres. My wife and I invested in this community by building our new home there. We raised our family here and have been engaged in our community for all these years. Every morning, I make time to walk the entire block, I pick up litter, sometimes I'm cleaning up graffiti. I do this not because I enjoy it, but because I care where I live. We have never had a voice in our community. I felt that we've been neglected far too long, but with this proposed resolution, I feel that we're heading in the right direction. We like the country feel of Lincoln Acres. This is why we have stayed here. The resolution would allow us to have a voice in Lincoln Acres in how our community grows, in which developments are the right ones for us. I thank the county supervisors who support the establishment of the Lincoln Acres Community Group. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Michelle's coming forward, I'll invite the final three in-person speakers, Patricia Sains, Teresa Ramirez, and Trava Johnson.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I want to start off by applauding Chair Protem Agiri for finally, not that she just got there, but for the fact that for years, for decades, this group of people have had absolutely no voice in being able to talk about what they feel is important for their community. I was helping some friends look up who their planning group was or where they would have, who represents them, and I was stunned to find out that they were completely disenfranchised. So I applaud this movement, and this is going to make a difference in them being heard, and so thank you very much.
My name is Patricia Sains, and I'm a 40-plus-year resident of Lincoln Acres.
I'm going to pause your time. You want, move the mic up?
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
As I was saying, my name is Patricia Sains. I am a 42-plus, yeah, 42-year resident of Lincoln Acres, and I support the resolution to establishing the community sponsor group. The Lincoln Acres community is happy to finally have a voice in what happens in our area. We thank Supervisor Agiri and her staff for this, their assistance in organizing, for helping us organize as a community. Thank you very much.
I'm Triva Johnson, for the record, and good morning, supervisors. I support the establishment of the Lincoln Acres Community Sponsor Group. I was born and raised and still reside in Lincoln Acres, in the home that belonged to my father, and one day I will pass it to my daughter. I don't know what I would do if anything ever happened to Lincoln Acres. This is needed for the community of Lincoln Acres. Please adopt this resolution. Thank you.
And then final call for Teresa Ramirez. Okay, not seeing Teresa in the chamber. We'll go ahead and go to our phone speakers. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
A park with 2,000 residents and only 220 acres, also surrounded by National City. Since National City also provides many of their utilities, it may be less expensive to get services from the city, and therefore I would recommend that you consider negotiating for a special Lincoln Acres representative on the Planning Commission, maybe two of them. And if you're really hung up on setting up a CSG Community Sponsor Group, maybe you could include a few other areas like Paradise Valley or Skyline, so that the CSG with just 2,000 members does not have an excessive amount of influence when considering legislation which affects the entire county. However, setting up a CSG for just 2,000.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
I'm Conzwellow.
So, yeah, this is very typical of the county to pick this demographic, always needing representation. This is really about allowing for the county government to be able to easily influence the community and do as they please. I guess pushback from concerned uninfluenced community members, like in places like Lemon Grove, Benita, and Spring Valley, had this come to be, because it's like, you know, appointed by the BOS and not elected. That sounds like real private interest would be the, that of which the county wants. Doesn't sound like the proposal of a community sponsor group represents the community at all. So be careful what you allow for this government, Lincoln Acres, and majority of that community doesn't even know who Paloma or Tara is. Let's be very real and honest. Pay attention to what your local government does, because they don't care about--
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
The first line in this item claims county planning is more responsive to local needs if there is a high level of citizen participation. If that's true, why was the county almost completely non-responsive to local needs for the harm money Cardenas Grove project when there was a high level of citizen participation, warning about a needed evacuation route, as well as the protection of endangered species? That was yet another example of the county being negligent on animal and human welfare. Maybe decades from now, when sponsor groups have elected rather than appointed members, and if this day can ever be taken back from the crazies, it'll be nice that Lincoln Acres can have a forum to be heard. National City will be thrilled to advise their friends where to go to have their voices heard in the county jurisdiction. I have a sneaking suspicion, I know how this item ended up on the agenda, but I'll keep my mouth shut and say I'm in a super rare support of an agenda item. But consider the cost to set up this sponsor group is $10,000. That's half the cost to send Monica and Jol to socialist Austria to achieve nothing. Opportunity costs are real. Represent the people here and now.
Thank you. Your time is up, and we're going to go back to in-person speakers. I'd like to invite forward Edward Fletcher. You'll have one minute to address the board.
Thank you, Ed Fletcher. I have a few properties in Lincoln Acres, grew up in Lincoln Acres. I currently live in Benita. We have to look at the value of Lincoln Acres. Lincoln Acres is worth at least $250 million, possibly $300 million. Benita was going to get swallowed up by Chula Vista, and it was only through a community group that Chula Vista didn't get Benita. So if we look at just the raw value, the numbers, Lincoln Acres has always been marginalized. We've never had a voice, and it's a wonderful community. It's where the gardens grow, the roosters crow, and happiness flows. I would exhort each of you to look at your life, and you have an opportunity right now to make a decision to honor those that have come before and to make a path for those that come in the future to have bigger yards and remain without this crazy density. Lincoln Acres, we just eclipsed $900,000 in San Diego, and Lincoln Acres is worth more than that. So please, help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. And final in-person speaker, I believe it's Michaela Polanco? Thank you.
Good morning, Board Supervisors, Board of Supervisors. My name is Michaela Polanco. I am the largest landowner of Lincoln Acres. Fortunately, I've been given the privilege to run and operate La Vista Memorial Park. The Kimbels are laid to rest there. It's a historical site. Those are the founders of the majority of Chula Vista, Benita, and National City. We would like your support to please allow Lincoln Acres to have a safe, healthy, and the best public welfare for the entire citizens that live there, which is over 2,000 citizens there. We have been underserved for many, many years and underrepresented. First, it was Nora Vargas for many years. We hardly ever saw her, or she hardly ever knew what our special needs were, and now we have Aguirre that might be able to help us, and hopefully will have your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much, and I just want to thank so many members of the public who came down to participate, and I appreciate the leadership of Chair Protem Aguirre and really trying to figure out how to have more participation and representation in all of our communities. We have a request for comment by Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you, ma'am chair. First of all, I'd like to second the motion on this.
Supervisor Aguirre, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, and I also have comments, but I can wait until everybody finishes.
If you have comments, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Lincoln Acres is one of San Diego's most historic unincorporated communities located between National City and Chula Vista, as you all heard. Originally, it was established in the 1920s. It's one of the few areas where working-class families, many of them from Mexican-American descent, were able to buy small parcels of land and build their own homes outside city limits. It's defined by narrow streets, charming homes, urban farms, and deep, multi-generational roots. Lincoln Acres is uniquely vibrant and a very close-knit community. For nearly a century, they have fought to preserve the community's semi-rural charm and independent identity. Protecting this unique community character while improving public safety, infrastructure, and access to county services is central to our shared vision for the future of Lincoln Acres. This community has a voice that needs to be heard. I heard them during my campaign, at commission meetings, fighting for their community, and represented, as you all heard here today. I'm very grateful to everybody who took the time to come out and give comments, including those who've been there since they've been born. Today, as a county, we have the opportunity to better listen by establishing the Lincoln Acres Community Sponsor Group, bringing a strong community voice to the table to help shape their future while preserving their past. Community Sponsor Groups serve a vital bridge between residents and county government, providing a structured, transparent forum for communities to engage, as you all have heard, in planning, land use, and local priorities. The establishment of the Lincoln Acres Community Sponsor Group is a major step towards equitable representation in county governance, and as you all have heard, it is very beloved. It is a very unique community. I am so proud to represent them, and this is the first step towards having them have their own voice. And even though they are, yes, appointed by county board supervisors, the supervisors have all been elected by the people. So this is a democratic step in the right direction. Thank you again to everybody who spoke. I see you, I hear you, and I'm proud to represent you. And with that, I'm happy to make the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Can we all please not clap? So just a reminder, everyone, no clapping in the chamber, but thank you for snapping, twinkling, and other mechanisms of showing silent support. So thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Aguirre, and we have a second by Supervisor Anderson, and Supervisor Anderson, please go ahead and continue your comments.
Well, I'd always known of Lincoln Acres, but when I got elected as Board of Supes, I heard Lincoln Acres loud and clear. I was surprised that they didn't have a sponsor group, because they have shown up to more LAFCO meetings than anyone else. They've shown up to every organization, and they show up in force like today. So, believe me, while you didn't have official representation locally, I heard you loud and clear. I've never seen a community show up in force like yours. So clearly, you have a lovely community that someday I'd like to stop in and meet you all personally.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments?
Chair, I'm sorry, just real quick. I just want to thank community members for coming out and making this, as the supervisor said, you're already organized, but this is a formal process, so thank you, thank you for showing up. I did hear one of the comments that, just real quick, alluded to Paradise Valley and Skyline. There's actually the Paradise Hills community and the Skyline community that are within the city of San Diego. They both have community councils, and they both are part of a planning group there within the city, so I know that this is, we, our land use jurisdiction is over unincorporated areas, so I just wanted to clear that up. But I'm very grateful to see the community come together and stand up for, to preserve the history of your community, so thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you, and I would like to echo my colleague. You all definitely make me want to come visit, so thank you, and thank you for just participating in this process. Yeah. So we have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Aguirre, a second by Supervisor Anderson. If anyone can please vote.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson.
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond.
Yes.
Chair Protem Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp.
Yes.
And Chair Lawson Reamer.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously, with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and again, thank you for being here. We now resume non-agenda public comment. So Ryan, please call the remaining individuals that requested to speak during non-agenda public communication.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We do have five requests left to speak, all coming via phone, so for those that have requested to speak by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you, and we will go ahead and give you a moment to do so. Just again, for anyone that has requested non-agenda public communication, this is your time to call in. I don't have any callers, but we're still going to give you a moment, another moment to do so. All right. Chair Lawson Reamer, not seeing anyone call in, that will conclude non-agenda public communication for this morning.
Okay. Thank you very much. We now move on to closed-session public comment. As a reminder, this is an opportunity for individuals to comment on items that are listed on our closed-session agenda. So Ryan, please call the individuals that requested to speak on closed-session matters.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We do have seven total, actually, item 22 and IHHS. Item one on yesterday's General Legislative Session Agenda are closed-session matters. A closed-session agenda includes eight matters. Individuals that have requested to speak on closed-session matters must provide comments related to the matters listed on the closed-session item, otherwise your comments will be considered off-topic. We do have seven total requests to speak, four individuals in person, and three requests to speak by phone. For any individuals that requested to speak on closed-session matters by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. Go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. I'll go ahead and invite everyone forward, allegedly Audra, Jay Royston, Jennifer Royston, and Mark.
None of them are either. Anywho, yes, so with anticipated litigation, I would like to ask county council to truly investigate the Malaika and Zaya Robinson case and look into doing a forensic interview with Malaika Robinson. It's not being something that has been done, and I think in order to make the best decisions for the children that you guys are dealing with, and you represent the county, and so you should be making the best decisions possible, so I would encourage you to do that. And, you know, I did file a complaint, and so it's being investigated, but I truly hope that you would take the evidence that I have that would help you decide that and use it as opposed to dismiss it, because we're talking about the sexual abuse of a three-year-old little girl and potentially a two-year-old. She just can't talk about it like the three-year-old can. So, otherwise, it sets you guys up for litigation and to be sued, because you're obstructing justice. I would also like to ask you to think about when you're dealing with housing and any kind of these safe sleeping sites that Dreams for Change is definitely not the company to work with. That NGO is complicit in 22-plus and counting deaths, sexual assaults. In fact, I'm going to be meeting with somebody today who was sexually assaulted by a staff member, and instead of reporting these things to the police, they wind up discouraging the victims to call and report it, and will just fire the employee as opposed to making sure that that person isn't out raping somebody else. So when you guys want to be spending our money on entities like this, you really need to be doing your due diligence, because there is a lot of bad things happening with Dreams for Change.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone, and go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Once again, list of cases needs to be in a format editable by common programs such as Microsoft Word, per the Brown Act, and please copy this 59454.2A2B. Much better. Four acts of cases, one potential, three labor-related issues. A lot seems to have got off the list. Hope you're telling us about all of the cases that were closed. Maze versus Baird. The Candy employee apparently put up a sign obscured by shrubbery. The court apparently found him not liable for this, because the candy's liability is under different laws. Doesn't sound very ethical to me, but that's government. Cleveland National Forest Foundation versus Candy is where the candy used old data to set JHG limits. Sounds like it relied on sending eggs old data. Suggests you settle quickly before the penalties set up. Chuck versus Kathy is a jail-bait case where the candy intentionally erased unfavorable video footage. Better fire someone and settle before the penalties set up. Vu versus Candy is a lawsuit alleging Vu was not promoted to CAO because of his race. I suggest it's because he's scumbag and what he did as the elections chief in Cleveland, so he should give up the case. And I hope you'll settle the 150-odd case related to the sexual abuse. How much will continually lead to putting our discussion costs and money into it?
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Hey, it's truth case is where Vu got screwed, and case F is for fun with public employee county counsel David Joshua Smith, the one who ran out of privileges. If you need to borrow some privilege, maybe ask Paloma. Even Monica had to ask if he was going to interrupt me again. David's made everybody laugh out loud with his rocking in the chair, confused as to how to respond when someone simply reads an email anyone could find on the internet. That's enough for failure, especially because there were three slightly concerning incidents. One, David violated the county DIE policy about not assuming someone's gender identity. He assumed my pronouns. If the county's going to pretend to be inclusive, then everybody needs to follow these brainwash policies at all times. Two, yesterday David said, "I don't think," when talking about whether someone would face punishment from the county for buying a Halloween costume. How can you recommend an item is legal when you're not 100% sure? And three, David assumed that I would read Helen's email again as before. I didn't even know if I'd do such a thing, right up until he triggered it. So to test county council's performance again, I will finish Helen's email entitled "Inappropriate Interference," sent December 6, 2023, to former county council Claudia Silva. Quote, "I am documenting this for the record since you are the point person for the recruitment, as well as CC. I told Tara, 'No.' I also told her that if anyone in the bureaucracy found out that she had cut a deal like this, it would discredit Michael and Paul, not to mention looked like she was trying to insert her self-chosen politico into the bureaucracy to ensure she was securing her favor with him. This isn't just interference, it's interference that destroys the integrity of the CAO office. One final note, I also alerted to her that La Prinsa had made two inquiries into Paul's appointment, his job description, details of the vacancy, salary, et cetera. Therefore, if something like this got out, it had the makings of a salacious article in punching our ethical standards." End quote. Doesn't it feel good to have that all out there? It's almost like it's a privilege to hear it. By the way, Ingrid always does a good job, unlike David. Hope you feel better, Paloma. Stay away from protests with deadly TDS going around. Look what happened.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller. We'll go to our next caller.
Hello, my name is Justin James Castro.
You can continue--
Hi, my name is Justin. Hi, hello?
We can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you. Please, go ahead. Your time is--
Okay. Well, you guys rang the bell twice, so how am I know? So when, can we start my time now?
It's already started. Go ahead.
No? Hi, my name is Justin James Castro, former county San Diego employee, fired because of bringing up issues about election security, given disability because the county wants to hide it. The county decided to file a restraining order, and we wonder why we pay so much money in lawsuits, because our elected officials were actually selected for the same system that they are protecting and going to go to jail for. I hope you guys read the documentation that you're going to be soon finding more litigation, because I have not done anything. I have not fired a shot at you guys like you fired multiple shots at me. So this shit is going to end. You're going to go ahead and stop defining us and stop allowing people to call people KKK, our service workers, KKK members. You know, that kind of shit shouldn't fly. You get pissed off at me when I bring up that shit, historical context trying to bring up to you guys. So let's treat everyone equally, okay? Can we go ahead and do that? And are you going to go ahead and tell me the results of the investigation that you did, Tara, that you said that you were going to do? And do you recognize the fact that all the laws that you passed that take away our money, when that gets reversed because we find out election fraud is over? You know, those class action lawsuits, people could make money off of, a lot of money, like $100 million worth of money. It's amazing, isn't it? I tried to warn you about this, but you wanted to go ahead and--
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on closed session matters.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any enderments today? Okay, then we now proceed to closed session, and we are going to go directly to closed session.
The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under item 22 and IHSS Item 1 on yesterday's session's agenda. There are any reportable actions, they will be reported out after the conclusion of closed session today. And the next regular meeting of the board will take place on November 4, 2025.